I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would call the roll?
Here.
Mr. Dill.
Here.
Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Herr.
Here.
Mr. Sins.
Here.
Mr. Terry.
Here.
I have one amendment to tonight's meeting agenda. I'd like to add on, along with our other sessions, like to add an executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G8, to consider confidential information related to an applicant for economic development assistance.
The agenda at men.
Second.
Mr. Dill.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yep.
Mr. Herr.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Yeah.
A motion to approve the council's special meeting minutes from November 18th, 2024.
Motion to approve special council meeting minutes.
Say it again.
Mr. Herr.
Yeah.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Herr.
Yes.
On our agenda this evening, we have listed just a special presentation, and it kind of worked out wonderfully because this evening our police officers are having training next door, and so this kind of pertains to them that you guys would want to come in here. In July, during the scene freshers, Mr. Danny Toob Sr., he called me the week leading up to the event and said, I'd like to bring my truck. He restored this truck in patriotic paint and for as a reminder of our country and our freedom and for police officers and in support and he also goes around to different events and takes this scroll. I took this entire, but I'm sure you guys can display it however, but he said, please present this to your law enforcement officers, you know, how much the community supports them. So I'd like to unroll this whole here so you guys want to come in here. So people could come out through around the day, I think on Saturday, there's a practical pool where there's so many people that come to that event. And I'll unroll it from today, but here it is with every with people who come on and knew about it and was able to sign it or took time to kind of stop and look at it. But just wanted to present this this evening to the officers. We couldn't be the community that we are without your dedication. And I know I always feel safe whenever I'm around Plain City, no matter whether I'm walking to the school or just knowing when I'm asleep at night that you guys are out of control. So thank you for putting your life on the line every day for our community. I just wanted to give this special presentation. Mr. Toob's going to be here this evening, but we talked about bringing the truck out to the department in the springtime because it's not a wrap. It takes it on, so he does it out in unfavorable weather, and that's what we're having this evening. So I want to get all of you guys here to sign a council number, so let's get in a picture here. Ready? She thought we were going to turn it over to you, but we turned it over. Thank you.
A lot of talent. You guys want to come in here? Maybe stand over there behind counsel. Mr. Lewis, can you do me a favor?
Sure.
Sit over here with your wife.
Sure.
What's that? Yes. So I'm going to do a little bit something different tonight. I mean, usually when I have this many officers here, I'm usually recognizing one of them or all of them. Tonight, we're not doing that. So I just want to first thank mayor and council for allowing me to have enough time here up here to speak just for a few minutes. So just bear with me. Apparently, you guys don't know why you're here. Okay, so in life, we all face different types of tragedies such as losing a parent or family member. Losing a twin sister myself, I know how hard it is to move on with life, but I could not imagine the grief of losing a child. Therefore, when I recently heard that Mr. Aaron Lewis and Rachel had lost a child a few years ago, I wanted to recognize the profound love, resilience, and compassion they have shown in the face of an unimaginable, an unimaginable loss. In memory of their beloved son. Ryan, go over a little bit. Sorry. In memory of their beloved son Keith, Mr. and Ms. Lewis turned their grief into a mission of hope and comfort. Through their nonprofit organization, Keith's Comfort Blankets, they have touched the lives of countless children and families, donating nearly 16,000 blankets to Nationwide Children's Hospital and beyond. Each blanket is more than just fabric, it's a symbol of warmth, security, and love. Today, we honor that incredible legacy with a token of our deep respect and gratitude. The Plain City Police Department is honored to present the special blanket adorned with our agency's logo as a reminder that Mr. and Ms. Lewis will always be comforted and protected by the Plain City Police Department. Just as you have wrapped others in warmth and care, please know that we are here to wrap you in unwavering support. Your dedication through unimaginable hardship inspires us all, and your work reminds us of the incredible difference one family could make in the world. On behalf of the Plain City Police Department and everyone whose life you have touched, thank you for your strength and kindness and your remarkable hearts. May this blanket serve as a small reminder of the immense gratitude we feel, we feel for all that you do, and it is a symbol of comfort and protection that surrounds you every day. Thank you. Just real quick, the story about this blanket is that I reached, a company reached out to me a while back and asked me if they could make this blanket for us, that no charge and no obligation, and we could do with whatever we want, we could do with it with whatever we wanted to. So I've had it for a while now, and it took me, I mean, you could ask Tom, I've been wanting to do this for several months, but so many times, if I tried to think about what to do with this blanket, I mean, I probably had 30 ideas and nothing ever seemed logic. But just one day, it felt like, you know, God smacked me in the back of the head when I found out what you guys do. And as Philip will say, it woke me up in my office. So, you know, I've realized this is what was meant for this blanket, or for you guys to have it.
We'll try not to donate this from the top.
No, no. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, our police officers. Yes.
Rachel, you don't have to stay if you don't want.
Okay, after that, we are now into our visitors' portion, and our only visitor of the evening is Jim Dawson, so.
Oh, that.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks. Wow. So I wanted to come and talk about Rock the Clock, and I know I was going to follow that. Seems pretty insignificant now. Anyways, I want to talk about 2022. I know that was the last time I think I even presented to council about expenses of Rock the Clock, unfortunately. I think I skipped 2023, but I pulled up 2022s, and in 2022, we only had $46,000 in expenses, and it was $47,000 in revenue. And then 2023, this is off of the IRS's website. And by the way, just to let you know, Thad Ikorn here in Plain City is my accountant, and Donovan Yudzie is my bookkeeper, and he does all of my books and all of my financials for all of my companies. So this was prepared by Thad since 2022, I believe. He's been keeping track of all of my finances. So in 2023, we had $54,000, we jumped up to $54,000 in revenue and $56,000 in expenses. And then along came 2024, and we just really exploded. And I think a lot of it had to do with our, the act that we had and fences and things. But, you know, in 2024, we tripled in revenue to $163,837, and then our expenses were $160,951. And I wanted to explain a little bit about the sponsorship, just to give you some perspective on 2024 and 2025, those two, those two numbers right there. We had, you know, a lot of business sponsorship, around $20,000 from various businesses in town, but $24,250 came from me to put on Rock the Clock for 2024. And then in 2025 already, I've had to spend $45,000 because Dylan Scott is $90,000. So you always have to spend and pay half of the money upfront, and then you pay the other half at the time of the concert. So that money is already spent for 2025, but that's why it's on this expense sheet here. And under advertising and marketing, we spent a lot of money on marketing, probably 4,500 of that, $9,000 is on marketing. And then down a little bit was $5,000. That was back to same Plain City Baseball Association, Ohio Premier Soccer Club, Daily Needs Assistance. Those are the people that volunteered, that we gave back to the community of whatever organization they wanted us to give to. And then the cost of goods sold, the food and drink, that's what the cost of goods sold is, that's $15,000. That's the money that we had to, that we spent to get the drink ticket, so that up there of $60,000. And then the performers, there were $72,000, production stage, sound lights, fencing, barricade, that's all included in that, a $52,000. So I think that a lot of times, people don't realize how, how quickly expenses add up. And so it's nice just to see it on paper. And I don't want any, anyone from council or from the village or anyone to think that there's some enormous windfall of income, because there isn't. We try to, and hopefully in 2025, we can, we actually have $2,800 coming into 2025. So the goal is, is continue to make a model so that we are positive. And I think that we do that through trust and respect in the community and in the businesses through sponsorship, and I hope that we're doing that because we have shown that sponsorship is increasing year after year over year. Our sponsorship is increasing, and so this year, we've already, just from our announcement for who's coming, we, I've already had more people commit to sponsoring and big sponsors from out of town, not even people in town. And so I think that's a great compliment to Plain City and to what's coming in Plain City and the people that want to make Plain City even better and even greater, and the people that come here to visit and how impressed they are with the village and the way that people are. All I hear is compliments from concerts to customers that come into the greenery about how friendly everyone is and how clean it is. And so I just wanted to say all of those things, and I know that 2025 budget is coming up, and I would, of course, by looking at this, I, I would like to eventually get more buy-in from the village and more sponsorship from the village, and that would be a tremendous help, especially knowing that we went from $45,000 for Nico Moon to $90,000 for Dylan Scott. And I know people complain, why you keep, why do you keep making it more and more expensive? But we're trying to keep the excitement going. I don't think that needs to go to a half a million dollars for Morgan Wallen, but I think that excitement is there, and artists are, it's outrageous what people are asking to come and perform anymore, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. And the earlier, you have to, you have to get people earlier and earlier and earlier. We had Dylan Scott probably a month, a month and a half ahead of the time that we announced. We just had to wait for Fort Laramie because he was playing there. We had to wait for them to clear him, or that's why we couldn't announce it any earlier than we did. But all of those things are all factors. I know Jody knows a lot. I think your brother does.
Brother-in-law. He's with Brooks and Dunn.
Yeah, so there's a lot of factors that go into all of this. And this year, by the way, because of the number of dollars that are coming into Rock the Clock now, there has to be more people on my board. And so we've already have reached out to a couple of local people. We need three more members on our board, and we have some great people that have shown interest, and so I'm excited about that because there has to be more oversight. And that is very good about making sure that we are following the IRS guidelines to a T. So I wanted to let you guys know and give you comfort about that also, when you are helping and sponsoring this event, and that's the purpose in today. So thank you for your time. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
This is not official, so I would appreciate, and I don't want to publish because it's not official numbers, but it will be published in the IRS soon, but if you would just not share it to the public.
We just get.
Do you want to collect them?
No, you can collect them because, or we'll collect them so that way, like, we're not in possession of, yes, since it doesn't say draft. Moving into reports, last week, Ms. Lepton and I met with Congressman Carey's office to give them updates of Plain City and just go over some of our concerns with, that we have, that we experience with some of the growth and what maybe that they could help us with in terms of grants and other help on Longos level. And then also coming up, not this weekend, but weekend after, we have Christmas Rock on December 7th. I don't want to take away from Mr. Sins's report, so I'm just going to go into, I'll leave him to explain more. We have socks for Carly drive happening now through December 1st, I believe, so if you can donate any socks packages, they are trying to get over 5,000 pairs to donate. So that box is out in the lobby until December 1st, or probably shortly after. We also have a bin for toys for the DNA toy drive, so if we can maybe bring some toys to the work session coming up, that would, to help fill some from the municipal building, that would be great. We also will be having a bin for Santa for seniors, so that is a nonprofit started from a lady here in the community that she takes different care packages around to our assisted living, to Pleasant Apartments, and to spread some cheer through for our senior citizens in the community. And I think that is all, we selected our coloring contest winner, so I want to tell, like, I want to give a thank you to staff members who spent much time to judge the coloring contest entries because it was very hard, and they said, why are you making us this? Not as easy as what we thought it might be because there's a lot of talented young artists here in Plain City, and so the winners were contacted this evening. So I'm, I know we had well over 100 entries for this year, so thank you to staff members for helping to select winners. Moving on to our village minister.
Thank you, Mayor. Leave pickup continues through December 13th, trying to get that word out, but only a couple weeks left. Just a reminder that the office is closed Thursday. The Clean Ohio Committee met last week, and they're, we're looking good for a recommendation for a pretty large grant through that. We hope to find out, well, they are making the recommendation. We hope to get the grant agreement going soon, and then staff's just getting ready for all the Christmas activities that are coming up in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lepton. Our finance director, Ms. Sonnet.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
All right, thank you. Chief McKee.
All right, Mayor. You saw that the rest of the police department annual, uh, tape. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
Jamie volunteers.
Actually, look.
We tried that last year.
Counsel president, Mr. Terry.
We'll, we'll talk about the meeting schedule.
Okay.
Well, nothing.
And our director, Ms. R. Okay. Economic development, Ms. Perry.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We met on, I believe it was, and hadn't had a meeting since July. Just a little time went by so quickly. So we spent that meeting just, Mr. Stanford, Mr. Hutchinson, catching, catching us all up and getting us up to speed on all the ongoing projects. So looking forward to kicking off 2025 on January 21st at 11:00 will be our next, our first meeting in 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Thank you. Board of zoning field, Herr.
Yes, Mayor. We have one applicant came through for a decision out through, we have one issue tabled for, 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 for construction or addition, that's being, that, that, that condition for a city park.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Planning zoning efficient net, and we approved zoning for the preview commerce park. We tabled the PUD until our next meeting, and we approved the long place for our trailhead connector. And so, and then we have a meeting coming up December 18th. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Sins.
Thank you. Well, you have, we got the rapid four to holiday hall coming up in less than two weeks, right? No? And that's also the Christmas under the clock, what holiday hall start at 9:00? 9:00 noon.
And then in our meeting, we talked about the trail project, and there's all the information that we covered here of the VA, so I'm not much to report there. And a couple of things that I'm going blank on.
One thing I did want to mention was the, the Fox study that's ongoing, we did publish the proposed rendering land if the pool were ever to be expanded, and that is online, so folks can actually click on it and they can see a look at that and give it as to what they like and don't like. And that survey will be live until close of business this coming Monday, December 1st, I believe. So we'll probably get another push notification on the app and make folks aware that, so we invite the public to please give your comments again. Nothing is set as done, this is just the first step for structure.
And forward it to your social network, so here.
Thank you, Mr. Sins. Anything on pre-?
True commission.
Okay. Thank you very much. Personal Finance CIP, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. Meaning, the meeting last week, I think we're on hiatus for a little bit. I think we're good. Updates for us.
Okay. Fire.
Fire ward, we got moved to the 12.
And congratulations to Chief Adams on the appointment. You don't look as enthusiastic.
There was an announcement online.
Congratulations. Plain City Area Development Corporation.
No meeting in December. We got, 2025 will be our first meeting.
Thank you very much. And any updates from UCPA, Chamber of Commerce?
You.
Dawson, you were the speaker at the last UCPA meeting.
All about failure.
The what?
All about failure.
Oh, God. Okay, moving into discussion item, 2025 budget.
Mayor, we won't go through the entire budget again, but I did compile some supplemental information based on our discussions last time. A lot of this is just planning documents, not necessarily what's in the budget. I want to highlight a couple of items, like the estimated housing projections. This year, to this point, we've had 290 dwellings approved, so we expect that number to continue to increase to 325 additional units next year. And then after that, consistent for a few more years, until sewer and water potentially opens up in 2028, and then that number exponentially grows. The developments do continue on the basis that water and sewer will come up US 42 through Mid-Ohio Sewer District, but even with the already approved houses that have their PTI, we expect several hundred to be built over the next few years. What does that mean for village revenue? The last few years, we've seen about an eight to 10% increase in revenue, so assuming that that number stays consistent of housing units built, you can see as the, how that income tax revenue continues to grow. That revenue is divided between general fund and capital improvements each year. With this rapid growth comes a level of stress in our organization. There's more phone calls to answer, more tax returns to process, more streets to plow.
Uh, no meeting in December. We got 2025 will be our first meeting.
Thank you very much. And any updates from UCPA, County Chamber of Commerce? You were the speaker of the last UCPA thing. The what? Oh, God. Okay, moving to fashion item, um 2025 budget. Mayor, we won't go through the entire budget again, um but I did compile some supplemental information um based on our discussions last time. A lot of this is just planning documents, not necessarily what's in the budget. Um, I want to highlight a couple of items like the estimated housing projections. Um, this year to this point, we've had 290 dwellings approved. Um, so we expect that number to continue to increase to 325 additional units next year. And then after that, um consistent for a few more years until sewer and water potentially opens up in 2028 and then that number exponentially grows. The developments do continue on um the basis that water and sewer will come up US 42 through Mid-Ohio Sewer District. But even with the already approved houses that have their PPI, we expect several hundred to be built over the next few years. What does that mean for village revenue? The last few years, we've seen about an eight to 10% increase in revenue. So assuming that that number stays consistent of housing units built, um, you can see as the, how that income tax revenue continues to grow. That revenue is divided between general fund and capital improvements each year. With this rapid growth, um comes a level of stress in our organization. There's more phone calls to answer, more tax returns to process, more streets to plow, greater demand for recreational opportunities, more permits, uh more projects, more traffic, more law enforcement, so on and so on. So um I have done a little bit of organizational um estimating based on the next couple of years. If the growth does continue, which we expected to do what each department might look like.
What's the point 75 this year?
That would be hiring someone out on January 1st, um more of mid-year, and then that would become a one person next year.
Okay.
Uh, one big thing I did want to highlight um on page nine is capital expenses. This year, we have budgeted to spend a little over $4 million in capital expenses. That's street capital, parks capital, um buildings, engineering, uh building rehab, park land acquisition. It equals to about $4 million. Of that $4 million, 2.8 million is covered in grant revenue this year. That's a very large number um that comes at no cost to, directly to our taxpayers. Moving forward, we've done some high-level capital improvement planning for the next few years. Um, some of this depends on property acquisitions and it depends on council's direction of uh next project. Some of it depends on grants that may or may not be awarded. Um, we have several meetings coming up with our finance um consultant to try to nail that down a little bit. But I didn't want to put in an outline for it. Um, and then kind of looking forward what we plan to continue focusing on as we pass this budget and then um move into 2025.
Now, the last meeting, I think you're underestimating uh the needs and the staff side of things a little bit. But we, until we get to 26 and 27, it'll be hard to tell exactly.
It's fairly conservative.
Yeah. And the, the only other thing to say is that it's probably, and this is just something to think about. It's, it's nothing to change here, is that the, the income revenue generation is probably not going to be ratable as the new incoming residents will probably have a higher median income than the established. So we'll probably actually see, and it's probably, we're probably already seeing that a little bit. So if we grow 10% houses, we'll probably grow more than 10% revenue would be my generic statement. Um, I wouldn't change our plan based on that. Um, but just thinking for that a little bit. Oh, we're going to talk about this uh when we have Mr. Conley and everyone in. So uh great, long-term capital, need the project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have.
So timeline here, we are having a first reading, second reading for the budget.
Uh, first reading is proposed tonight.
Perfect.
Second reading would be the first meeting in December, December 9th.
So you want to have it?
No, that would be the second. That'd be like the, you have work session, which is the fourth.
Okay.
And then the meeting is the ninth.
For the first official meeting.
Yeah. So in, in that time, if you have questions.
Yeah, and I, and I met uh Lepton and a few other members of council uh last week to kind of go over a few things we had. Um, couldn't invite everyone. Sunshine Law. Um, however, I recommend if anyone does have detailed questions.
Moving on to the next topic, mobile vendor moratorium. I'm going to pass this to Mr. Hutchinson.
So our zoning code does not cover mobile food vendors, so food trucks, food stands. Right now, they're classified under eateries, which are permitted in a lot of our commercial districts. Uh, and our zoning codes relate to permanent structures on private property. All we have right now for food vendors is in our chapter seven under business, general offenses. Um, and it's just a permit that goes through the police department that does a background check and it's a permit for any food vendor that comes in to the village to operate. It is, that particular code section uh is very vague as well. It's, it's, I think it was 1984 is when that one was passed, so it hasn't been updated. Uh, but we do not have a zoning code that officially uh covers food trucks or mobile food vendors. Uh, we do have a couple that have been here for a while. Uh, we've had a new one last year or this past summer in Uptown. And we've actually already gotten a couple of quests already for this year. Food vendors are not permanent structures, they're not permanent uses. Now, they're intended for temporary use. Um, so we need a zoning code that, that covers that. Uh, I think this is the perfect time with it being winter, traditionally when food trucks aren't as active. Um, now, this is not going to interfere with any events that we have that may have food trucks. This will be for uh food trucks that are coming in that are, that want a semi-permanent spot on a private location. Um, but we, we don't have parking rigs. We don't have anything for these things. So we need to generate something. I do have some drafts, done a lot of research on it. And um it's something that we could have, you know, through P and Z, through council. By, you know, early or mid, mid-winter still, early next year. So it shouldn't affect anything. Any of the vendors that are currently active right now, it's not going to affect them. Uh, so this will be for any new incoming vendors. But it will eventually cover everybody who does that. So it'd be something I could probably have in front of P and Z, January, and the, at the council sometime in Jan, end of Jan, end of January.
So do they, is that how it works or is it kind of?
It's, so the permit we have through is just, uh, it's good for one year. It's for any food vendors. Uh, so the moratorium is technically, it's only on chapter seven because we don't have a zoning code for it. Uh, so by putting moratorium on the chapter seven code, it at least restricts any new permits coming in until we actually have a zoning code. So uh, the seven, the 735 chapter will still remain. It may be tweaked a little bit, but there'll be a complemented zoning ordinance that will cover those as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Division of Liquor Control notice legislative authority.
Uh, Mr. Driver, do you mind explaining this one?
The other notice is for the Division of Liquor Control. Every so long, Division of Liquor Control has all permitting orders for class D and C. But the municipality has to do with it. So this is an opportunity for legislative authority to determine if they're having a continued problem. Liquor permitting orders for establishments. This would be the opportunity for council as a whole to adjust. There would need to be legislation, um so on and so forth. But the attached settlement, by all current permit orders within the village. Those are one of the subjects to that. It doesn't protect any spot or anything like that. But if council had issue with to go permit orders for various variety of reasons, we can ask staff that need to go through, legal need to be involved in how some statements put up and resolution need to pass objective to that, to those permit orders and the public.
Does this fall into the same process, though, that we can also do nothing?
Yes, absolutely. So that's, yeah, and that is the two decisions. You may object, but looking good to the staff's floor, by absolutely council intent to do nothing. Uh, with this one, it's not in so much as a motion to request more plus it's if the action is chosen, that is the trigger, otherwise the council will not.
Does, if a council member so wished, when would they have to do it?
And when we, with a little share, we need to have all of the legislation and the legal council statement to Division of Liquor Control that get our second, which is why I want to present it to the council as possible.
People have, you want to motion something?
Questions? Okay. Moving on to council December meeting schedule. So we do know that December.
So I was, yeah, so I have no reason not to have the December work session, especially if it allows us to accelerate getting rid of the late um meetings. I was looking at the calendar while, that's why I skipped talking because I saw this on there. Um, does, what does staff think from a meeting schedule? What is your guys' request?
We would be fine with the work session and December 9th and request that the 23rd was the one canceled.
Yep. Makes total sense to me. Um, that's winter break for the kids, day before Christmas Eve. Um, I doubt we put a corner. Um, and we could always schedule one if we had to. But there's probably, if you guys can just make sure, there's only, now, if that means there has to be any readings on the fourth, I'm not against them.
Right now, I think we're on track. Um, unless something pops up, I think we're on track to have everything wrapped up for the next meeting.
Cool. And then that would make our organizational meeting on the eighth of January, which um should there won't be really any appointments uh outside of elections from the mayor. We don't have any swearing in or anything, no elections.
I could almost, um, we could do all the board appointments at our last council meeting of the year and take care of all of that if anybody.
Think by the, by the charter, can we? Or do we have to wait January? Or I guess if you didn't change it.
You can set slightly the proposal and then the actual vote in January. Do it that way. Charters, we have to do it.
Like for our first meeting in the year, I believe it's held on the president's behalf, you have it at the first meeting.
First meeting, okay. We can just, I mean, I don't really think there's any other committee happening. No.
So. So I guess looking at the first Wednesday. Yeah, so it'd be the eighth, it'd be the eighth, it'd be the eighth.
The 13th and 27th would be our council meetings. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. Um. The work sessions?
Yeah, yeah.
So on the eighth, we should just go ahead and plan it on being a goals and objectives review after the organizational portion, depending, Mr. Driver, if you can set the meeting to be that. Um, I have a copy. I'm sure you have a copy. There's some in here. If we can send those out, just so people can think about them. And then from, this is a little odd, but from a, a we, we aren't going to be doing a year-end evaluation process. Uh, we had been doing like every six months, but we pushed that to going to a normal yearly process. Doesn't need to be any of that in January of this year.
On Ja, uh, council December meeting schedule topic, but it was brought up in the staff, like maybe like our midmembers to have a training session sometime early January to kind of lay out all of the expectations for committees. So just kind of want to put that on everybody's radar. We could talk about that more on December 4th.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's been a goal, at least of mine and a few other council members I've heard say, as high functioning of committees as possible. So the best uh ability to do that would be having knowledgeable, high expectations. Um, so totally.
So the January 8th work session, that can take place, like the retreat we did last year, the Saturday.
Yeah, we can't do that, though. Uh, on January 8th, uh, we have to like elect a president, do all that stuff. And we can't do that, like.
That retreat stuff.
I don't hate the idea. Went well. Um. Maybe later in January. We could schedule, see how everyone's schedule schedule shape up.
Sure.
I thought last year was a really good one because we were getting new council member, but it's probably not a bad which of course.
Do you want to talk about the planning and zoning meeting for December 18th or?
Um, that's an opportunity um to meet at the same time. Planning and zoning meets on December 18th. And we were wondering about like if, if you have, if you needed that second official meeting in December.
Sure.
That that could be an option so we could.
Yep. Sounds great. The staff will already be hearing of it. I, I just assume we won't, but yeah, that's fine. Instead of the 23rd, you're saying?
Right, yeah.
Not a problem.
Okay.
So I, I'm taking?
No, we are leaving it as optional thing in lieu of the 23rd. If we deem it needed, we do not have it currently deemed needed. So we only have the fourth for December.
Okay, we have motions here. Um, a motion for point Steve Lebold to serve on the Plain City Area Development Corporation. Is there a motion to be affirmative?
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Motion passes to appoint Steve Lebold to serve on the Plain City Area Development Corporation. Is there a motion to rescind approval of PUD 24 dash 7 preliminary development plan for Creekview Commerce Park?
For prosperity. Could we maybe have a sentence or two why we're doing this and what this actually.
The Commerce Park, I mean, they presented to council before. Um, obviously, they've been going through the P and Z process uh through Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, they had the zoning approved at the last meeting. One thing we were kind of a step ahead because normally we take that, the way that our ordinances are laid out, we have to take that recommendation from planning and zoning. In this instance, we had basically approved um the preliminary development plan before planning and zoning actually approved. And at this most recent meeting, there are some changes. They're, they're gonna, I don't know what changes or if any are gonna be made to it, but there, there is going to be discussion on potential changes of preliminary development plan. So we're gonna pull that motion back. So we're gonna rescind the council approval on it until P and Z is done with it. Then they make a new recommendation to us.
Makes so sense.
Or the 18th meeting.
Yeah, perfect. So uh, motion to rescind approval of PUD 24 dash 7 preliminary development plan of Creekview Commerce Park.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Uh, motion for sending or approve for sending. Moving into business, second being Resolution 53 dash 24, authorizing the donation of abandoned bicycles.
So moved.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Yeah.
324 passes. Moving new business, first reading ordinance 27 dash 2024, approving final appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures in Plain City through December 31st, 2025. First reading ordinance 28 dash 2024, admitting codified ordinances, chapter 905 sidewalks, part nine of the streets, utilities, public service code. First reading ordinance 29 dash 2024, establishing a moratorium on the processing and issuance of mobile vendor licenses and declaring emergency.
Are we assessing second waiver, second reading?
First reading Resolution 54 dash 2024, authorizing the village administrator to award the contract for the plot that called Spirit Project to J. J. Labley. First reading Resolution 55 dash 2024, authorizing the sale of impounded vehicles. First reading Resolution 56 dash 2024, accepting public improvements constructed for Madison Meadows, section 2A and 2B. First reading Resolution 7 dash 2024, accepting public improvements constructed for Madison Meadows, section 3A and 3B. First reading Resolution 58 dash 2024, accepting public improvements constructed for Darby Station, section two, parts one through three. First reading Resolution 59 dash 2024, accepting public improvements constructed for Darby Station, section four, part one. First reading Resolution 60 dash 2024, ending the wage scale of the employees of the village in the city. And that concludes our public portion of our meeting this evening. And that concludes our public portion of our meeting this evening. We are executive session, not becoming back for the business. We are about to enter executive session, going to higher price code, one point one dot two two G two to consider the purchase of the property for public purposes. And also executive session, higher price code, section one point one dot two two G eight to consider compensation related to an applicant for development assistance. We will be going into G two first. To enter.
Motion to enter executive session and pursue into a higher price code, section one twenty one dot two two G two, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Will be staff for, be included.